Plans. And so I'll go through the plans and then at any time ask me questions. But Dan will do that, too. So the first plan was the site of Main Street, which we're all very familiar with, where we have done analysis before. This is kind of the plan that we showed you previously in a hand sketch and a concept plan, refined with the pushes and pulls of the bulk of the building footprint as it resulted with doing the plan update. So primarily that occurred at the park side of the building where it moved towards the park a little bit more. So it took up some of that green space, a little bit more of the green space. Overall, the building added about 1,500 square feet of more usable space than that hand drawn we looked at in May. But the perimeter of most of everything on Main Street into Alpine remained the same, most of it being the existing walls of the existing building. And I think we did a couple of little tweaks. So we looked at and obviously we internally charred it, but we also met with the chief a couple of times and talked about some of the issues that we had not yet prior to the last meeting gone through in any detail. Because we only had a turnaround time really quickly before. But how do you get apparatus or towed equipment down to the park, turn it into the lower bay? And that's where that apparatus would go, the trailer type equipment. So we added the turning block in the upper right corner. And that would be not to be parked in, but a space to allow maneuvering, getting things in and out of the at bay that had a trailer feature to it. So those are the primary differences in the back and the front. One of the things that we added was the command vehicles. We previously only showed one, which would be where you see two rectangles now below where it says bay one, bay two. That used to be one. So knowing that we needed three command vehicles like we had at other site, we stretched that and one there, not perfect, but included. We added a third command vehicle across the entry apron towards downtown. We can kind of see that rectangle there, too. So we accommodated it in kind, but functionally it's not exactly the same as the map site. But three vehicles were shown. To be more clear, we indicated that the Alpine parking is dedicated to the sheriff and that the main grade level is for fire staff parking. Whereas before, I think it was just called parking. We wanted to distinguish that the intent is that the sheriff's vehicles won't park down from the at bay. We also included barrier free parking on park side. And in this scheme are showing us to be paid for all in the park area to be similar and maneuverable like it would be at the map site for the fire apparatus. So that's the site plan. The next sheet is the lower level. I think that's what we have. The lower level, which previously had a lot of unfinished white box space with motivation of the spaces there, but we don't want to spend the dollars in that last version to outfit it for maybe a potential future use training, particularly in this case for comparison. We outfitted it with appropriate finishes for training, audio visual and communication equipment would be in that area as well as the storage and exiting. So all that, all those white boxes now finished space. In addition to that, on the far right of the plan, in that beige area, that was previously dedicated for city items, city storage. Now, since that time until today, we now understand that that's for fire department use. So that is now updated in terms of it used to be no work to be included. Now it's actually work to be finished, so that space should be finished out. The biggest change of all to the lower level, besides the white box being referred to finish space, is the addition of the two bathrooms, which are now directly accessible from the outside. So you see the green box there with fixtures of employees identifiable. And I'll tell you the reason for that. Well, I'm out now. Directly below it, where it says the storage area, that was the fitness space and the mezzanine for the firefighters. And if you can imagine that volume, the lower level has a mezzanine separate from the upper level where we had used that space for fitness. So the firefighters on the ground floor would have to go into the intermediate mezzanine, leaving their firefighting quarter space going down the stairs into the fitness. That was an issue for a couple of things. One, it's awkward and it could impact response time. So we moved that to the main floor where the firefighters will spend the majority of their time, hopefully most. And it situated itself directly over the bathroom. So I don't want to say the bathroom were a byproduct of moving the fitness. It was better bathroom accommodation than it made sense that that's where we put the fitness. So the fitness was more adjacent to firefighter functions on a day to day basis. And you got better bathroom facilities for the park. So that's kind of a covering of the lower level. I'll point this out. It'll be similar for the map site. So the training facility is for the department. And a lot of times they'll be the opportunity to do regional training for other agencies besides yourself come to the facility. And most of the time they'll know where to go. But there's the pre-function aspect of trading with 50 plus people all kind of converging on one space at one time. So the deficiency I'm pointing out, and it's common in almost all fire stations, that there is no pre-function space for 50 people. There's a vestibule and a moderate sized vestibule. So it's just a shortage on pretty much every plan. It's not 100% that way. Sometimes pre-function, break time, et cetera, outside of the training facility is just as important as the training space itself. Either plan that we have here, mad or Main Street, has that same aspect. Okay, we move to the next floor, which is the main floor for the Main Street. Couple changes here, the one I just mentioned with fitness. So you could see that it's kind of middle to the top of the page is the green square. So that's the program size that we call for to accommodate the equipment that would be there. And then immediately to its left, in between that space and the stair, is the roof to the vestibule below, but it's outdoor space on the upper floor. So that would be kind of the outdoor deck patio space, which is very common in fire stations. And it's now more and more common to have some outdoor space relative to the fitness room. So you could do outdoor training as well, or just open doors for ventilation when the season is appropriate. So it works kind of as a twofold. You have sliding doors from the fitness center, or it could be a overhead kind of garage door. And you have a man door with windows from the day room to the outside. I thought that was a nice kind of a benefit to moving the fitness center. You got that added feature of an outdoor space for the firefighters that we didn't have in the previous plan. The next thing we did was look at the question that came up about moving from apparatus space to apparatus space. You may recall the watch desk was to the outside wall with vision to the apron in front of both of that base. We pulled that back in so you'd have maneuvering, easy maneuvering interior from the existing apparatus bay to the new apparatus space. You wouldn't have to go outside. It took a little jostling to do that, but that, I think, addressed that issue perfectly solid. Maybe not, but certainly it addressed it. In doing that, we began to look at how that impacted the previous plan. So right behind the watch desk before was the PPE clean space and drying space. And after really thinking about that, wasn't the best place for it. But considering all the things available, real estate where we laid it out originally did fit. But since we now impacted it, we moved it over to a more appropriate space to the right. Bottom right, that's paint where the decon is. Imagine the process. So you're at a firefighting event. You're contaminated, you're gross decon at site. You come back to the station. You get off the apparatus bay and as a person you walk into the space, take off your gear, your hands will be cleaning it all off. And then you put it into the cleaning process, the next room. Instead of going across the apparatus bay like we had it before, now it's sequential. You go from the decon into the cleaning space into the drying space. But you still have to go from there across the bay to store it. We could have accommodated it differently, but we thought that that was a good arrangement considering all the constraints of the existing building. So that was another pretty significant change. That being the three really big changes, meaning improvements to this level of the plan. Consolidating the decon activity space, moving the watch desk to get connection internally from apparatus bay to apparatus bay, moving the fitness center to the level of which were the firefighters going to spend most of their time. It is a byproduct of getting that deck out sort of outdoor patio area. I'll mention here, although it's not graphically depicted, when we were working together, the chief and I, we realized there's certainly a lot of other ways to do this when you're considering upper level, lower level. The first thing you do is do a stacking diagram, what space is best suited to one level as compared to what's on the other level. And that just really basically start point, the assumption was most people upstairs in our, in this plan. There are a lot of other options right now is thinking about it from Joe Public. When Joe Public comes to this building, we don't want them to come to the front. We don't want them on that apparatus apron because they're in the way. And they could park and go in and leave the car right there and the people couldn't exit. Apparates couldn't take that. So the entry for Joe Public is down on the park side. But Joe Public needs to come in the vestibule, maybe get greeted, surveilled, or somehow know that they need to go upstairs where all the people are. With that is the need, we thought if this were to move forward, we'd go through a discovery process of moving fire administration, the public elements downstairs. So when Joe Public walks in, they're greeted. They don't have to wander, go up the stairs, go and go up the elevator. And in exchange, we move the training facility upstairs. Again, training for firefighters, firefighters would be with firefighters. That seemed to make a lot of sense. I don't think that enters into the cost model that much. We still need vertical circulation. But there's another thing that we can explore. And I'd say it fits within the footprint of this version of plan. Needless to say, anything could get modified. And this is so conceptual, it's a plan, but it's conceptual. If it went into schematic designs, this would tweak. It goes into the development and tweaks again. So this is by no means the plan of plan. That's all. Okay, I think that covers any questions on that so far?
Okay. So you maintain the existing building?
Yeah, so.
Is that why that solid white shell that I'm seeing on both tracks?
Yes, you're absolutely right, Mr. Mayor. And if you go back to the site plan, two sheets prior, we dashed it in and kind of distinguished the pink. So you can see that dash line indicates the footprint of the existing. And then we looked at some character imaging. Again, trying to be in similar fashion to what we were looking at at now, which is the material choice and delineation is different than what the cost model, the previous version was. We introduced multiple materials on the outside, similar to others maps design. Clay, clay brick versus just block brick, which is more suitable, I'd say, for downtown. And this didn't go through a lot of vetting. We just came up with something we thought that could fit again like the plan. It'll tweak as we move forward if this is the choice. It gives you two ideas or two images of what the station could be. And it's for two reasons. One, to give you a sense that it's comparable. And the other is to help the estimator budget what this kind of building's going to cost based on the materials, roof lines, et cetera. So those with the graphic. There's, I won't go through the map site in such comparable detail. It's what you've seen before, but it is included. I'll skip to, unless you'd like me to, I will. I think we're all pretty familiar with that.
Go back to the 8140. Is the, is the, I'll call it the east side or the right side of the bay where the mezzanine is? Is that essentially two things to the same? Two-story buildings over there now?
Yes, that's the plan. So.
Same footprint, right?
Same, same footprint. And there's the bridge that comes from Alpine. So the access for sheriff visitors or sheriff staff comes in from Alpine via a bridge that land on the second floor, the mezzanine of the existing station. So they hopefully would never have to be on the ground level. And right now, their current footprint, the sheriff just as a comparison, they're 960 square feet in their current space. Originally, we had 1510 in the Main Street plan for them. The program space was 2020, or 2,200. That's what we have in the map site. Knowing that we were making compromises in some square footage and that that was the area we could do it without affecting so much. That plan changed from 1510, which we had previously to 1330. Still more than their 960. But the change was we moved the PPE cleaning and drying over next to decon. So I took some of the lower level sheriff's area. Still, it's almost 50%, if not more than 50%, more than the current they have.
So they would have the entire upper area then?
Entire upper area and about 60% of the overall. And I'm confident, based on our current plan, if you looked at the sheriff's plan in the, in the map site, it's certainly appropriate, but trending in the last couple of years for a major part of that, which is their locker restroom facilities, has been a change, a real shift to a man and a woman goes into a locker room that has toilets, labs and shower. You know, both, both sides, you're going to two of them. The shift has been, there's a locker room. Men and women go in, or everybody goes into the locker room. And then they get their gear and they go into an individual restroom that has a shower, lab and toilet. That approach takes less square footage than having two fully equipped. So from the 200 or 2,200 square foot program I talked about as a map site, I'm confident that we could make what we need to work in that 1330 based on making that little shift of how you supply locker showers for sheriff. Likewise, we could reduce the square footage at the map site because of the same approach. I'm sorry, I got all the tension there, but hopefully answered the question.
No, it's okay. Should I make sure?
One other thing I'll point out in the imaging on Main Street. Making a major addition to a building without exactly copying what you're adding on to is a challenge from a design standpoint. You can see what we did with the roof line is we added some silhouette to it versus just a flat roof. We could also make the existing a flat roof, which is a pretty significant change. It's about 30% cost less for that roof type flat versus the slope. It would apply to, and I think you remember, we did the same thing at the map site. Where we looked at a roof of a slope to it and we looked at a flat roof. So we could apply that to this, too. But we, we look at it and how do you harmonize those two things? So we have the tower element kind of giving you the indicator it's a fire station besides the big doors up front. That helps. But it's also a turning point from the old to the new and the different room things. Not sure what quarters are in. I have prepared a PowerPoint, but I haven't ever printed out. I have some information I wanted to share that's not in your packet. We talked about budgeting. Is that, can I go to budgeting? Do they want to go, want to go through that comparative list in terms of issues? Is there anything on there that maybe got so abbreviated, it wasn't clear what it meant?
That was helpful. I appreciated it. Look at the table, yes, no's.
Yeah. Yeah, I just, there's certainly good things about either location. If that's kind of the comparison we're making. There's certainly good things about new and renovation, if that's what we're comparing. And I kind of tried to point that out. Renovation has some nice highlights to it, that you're taking advantage of embedded energy or sustainability that's already been used to direct what's there. But the overall performance of buildings today as compared when that was built is so much higher that it's still a little bit down. But I mean, philosophy or reusing an existing building is a sustainable strategy. So I pointed out things like that and kind of try to keep it to site. And then functionality of building and operation as you're using it as comparison. There's many more, but here's some highlights of what we looked at. From a cost standpoint, when you see the breakdown, the numbers are kind of surprising. But I looked at it myself. And I also then had Axiom Construction, which is, it did assist on budgeting in 2019. Look at it and they came back out and looked at the existing conditions. So they kind of validated that things are what they were when they looked at it last. And they did it kind of independent of me and then we kind of collaborated at the end. The thing I wanted to point out, that's not real evident. And when you just look at the map site, new build, next dollars and square footage, hopefully the construction time means something because every month you're spending, you're paying a lot of costs for construction management and field staff. That does impact the cost. But the things I wanted to point out that are in those numbers that you might not know is construction contingency. Construction contingency can vary greatly and it's certainly more for existing facilities as compared to new, because you take a lot of the unknown out of the equation. So we've carried 5% contingency for the new build and 15% for the existing renovation expansion. So three times as much. That's a pretty significant number. But the idea is that you don't have surprises along the way. We know that we're going to have surprises, but we don't want to exceed the dollars available on contingency. And any use kind of goes back to your budget or to you directly at the end. The other thing that might not typically be thought of as included, we have included technology and audio visual, because you're going to need that in your training facility. And then just throughout building communication, our technology wise. A lot of times what gets budgeted is the infrastructure and the point A to point B, meaning a box on one end is this conduit, a box on the other end. And it's up to the owner or user to put the wire from point A to point B and whatever device on each end. So in this case, we've included a budget that will take care of the standard devices, not equipment, not network equipment and the cable for that. So that's included. The other thing that's included that in some budgets aren't are furniture and fixtures. So to furnish and equip, fitness, training room, dorm rooms, office rooms are all part of the budget. And then also the standard equipment that you'd find in a fire station, like shore power, overhead water and air compressor, generator, that sort of thing is included. But there's also a handful of things that aren't included, typically referred to as soft costs. I like to say, here's a budget for a building. And then you should add about 15 to 20% more for soft costs. And generally what it includes is your legal costs, your bond sales cost, which is a pretty significant number. Site surveys that'll take place, the geotechnical investigations. And that's information you'll provide to the design team to use to finalize engineering and design. Permit costs, which usually gets waived. And I don't remember how it was handled for this building, but it would be a soft cost. Utility fees and usage, so that's cost during the course of construction to get temporary power, water to be used during the course of construction. Third-party testing, that's, that's an agent you want to have working for you that's observing and testing construction, special construction during the course of construction to verify that the specified criteria is being met. So they come up to the site, they take a test, they go to lab, or they take a sample, go to lab, do a test and then provide a report. That information provided to you and to the construction team, the design team to just make sure everything is meeting what expectations are. Stationing learning isn't included. And the reason that's not is because it's very particular to the department. And it could be a number, but when it comes down to it, it's usually bought outside of the contract because they're buying it at a preferential pricing structure because they can as a strict purchase. Moving cost and temporary combination, so those apply one or the other. You'd be moving out to renovate Main Street. You'd have temporary quarters cost and then you move back in. And then if you were going to map site, you'd have moving costs. You'd have to get from point A to point B. And then professional services, including civil engineering. So those are things that we would call soft costs. And that range is anywhere between 12 and 20%. I put you somewhere in this range around 15, it's my estimation. I didn't go through exhaustive review of it, but it would be in that range.
And that's included in these numbers?
That part is not included. Not included. I'll give you this, the list I just ran out, I really meant to have it in a visual, digital PowerPoint. But I'll give you this when I leave, Justin. And I'll send you the. I'll send you the digital copy, too. You can distribute it that way. So the numbers are dramatically different than when we looked at this in the fall of 19. You'll get to see it, right? The numbers are different. I kind of alluded to that when we met in May. Just to kind of back up and look at how that's progressed. I have a couple of examples I'd like to share with you. We just bid a job for the city of Madison Heights in magnitude of 12 and a half million. That was the estimate. A portion of that was a fire station, not the whole thing. And we had our refined estimate end of February. And it was end of February. And then we just received bids at the end of May, so roughly three months apart. And it was a 26% increase between final solid estimate received bids. And that seems to be pretty typical for projects that we're seeing right now. And some is very sporadic from week to week or month to month. I don't know how you really look at that without the bones on it, because it changes so much. Some things come down, but most everything's going up. In addition to that, I think I shared with you once before something like this, but I printed out, can I pass it on? I printed out some fire station particular, I'm sorry. Fire station costs. And I went back to 2018. This by no means every fire station has been built. Some that we know about, most of which we've actually been part of. So it gives you an idea of how, it's based on square feet. So you can see how square footage costs have been moving. This is amazing. I got one more. Chief, I'll give it to you. So you can see, and it's, it's not real. It's not easy to understand this because one could be a super duper and one could be make it as cheap as you can kind of things. An example I shared with you earlier about Madison Heights, I'll point that one out. This is the third one down the line. So we estimated a 26% less than 2.95. And it ended up at 438 square foot. And that's building cost. And all of these are generally building only, not site, because sites vary wildly in terms of what their development costs are. So that number, what I was trying to bring out is that some stations could be, my 50-year station, my rock solid station, and some could be extremely. Extremely last, some could be in the middle, this one was give me the cheapest station you can. And that's what that two point nine five was. It wasn't a new build, it was roughly. I think thirty-five hundred square feet addition and close to seven thousand square feet. And I'm just pointing it out just as a reference that. Here we are, two thousand twenty-two, getting square footage cost. In the range of four hundred and forty dollars a square foot. That is a is to make it as cheap as you can, just below that, I thought it was astonishing, that's a project we're bidding right now. It's a minor little thing, kind of just getting them equipped to do their new station, so we're fixing their existing so they can live for the next sixteen months while they do the new one. And that was eight hundred dollars square foot, and I'm looking at the construction manager cross-eyed saying, you gotta be kidding me. And that's real, that's kind of where we are. A couple others. I think those are the most relevant. The other thing else I'll mention that we're doing and I would advise. You to do too, when we, whatever we're gonna do, we do. We're building in escalation cost, these are like today, if you bid it today, we would expect it to be like this. We don't know what it's gonna be in three months from now, but we're saying, hey, it's gotta be an open discussion. We measure the market periodically and we know that it's gonna change. But we're looking at, you know, twenty percent, thirty percent kind of, let's build it in just in case, if you don't use it, you don't use it. The other thing we're doing is saying, once you do your your bids. Maybe you didn't use that twenty or thirty percent and now I'll call it pure escalation, that's what you can anticipate bids to be. On top of that, what's happening pretty frequently is a subcontractor. Will come to the construction manager, the G C, the builder and say, yeah, I just got a piping cost increase or. Our fuel surcharge and I gotta get more, so there's this subcontractor. Cost increase that's occurring and it's real. You have to account for, I think people that are already on the contractor saying, okay, I'm gonna deal with that through my contingencies. Contingency is not ever meant to do that, the numbers that I said we're using here. There needs to be something else and we used a. Madison Heights, we used two hundred and forty thousand as a, just put it in there as a number, so that ended up being fourteen point five million. Projects of twelve, twelve six that we started with, we used two hundred and forty thousand worth of just in case money, keep it in there. Don't call it contingency, let it be used, managed by the builder. To deal with and they'll fend off the best they can, the subcontractor. Issues and there are gonna be issues, so that's just one more of those little things, that's weird and new in today's construction world.
Zach did handle.
Yeah, so I just wanted to clarify on page four, these are just hard costs. Correct, and so the soft costs will add fifteen to twenty percent to that.
Correct.
And are these twenty twenty-two construction?
They're right now.
Okay, so my understanding from the station design conferences, they're anticipating about thirty-three percent escalation to next year.
I wouldn't say that's about right, we're saying it's about twenty percent or so in the three-month timeframe.
So. Add thirty percent to this and then add twenty percent to that, your whole cost.
That'd be about right. And I think that keeps you safe, will it really cost that much? I have no idea. And I'll, I'm gonna use my Madison Heights example that we just bid again, so it was twelve point six, it ended up at fourteen point five. We reviewed all the bids, there were like fifty, fifty-something categories of bids, different trades. And in the end, it was it was hot, but the bids were good, we looked at it and man, these are good bids. It was hard to tell the owner, oh, you're two million dollars over budget, these are good bids. Because we know what happened in the course of. Getting it from final design into the marketplace and getting numbered back. Though they were good, good bids, there were a couple goofy ones, but for the most part, they were good.
Eagle, what what number or what, there's two Madison Heights on this list. And either one of them is.
Yeah, so Madison Height was comprised of a fire station. Which we were replacing, tearing down the building, that's. That's the fifth one down. Or sixth one down. So that came in during the design phase, said four million, but it was creeping towards five. So they decided, hey, we're not gonna do a new station, we're gonna renovate and add on, that's what they wound up doing at the two point nine five. So it was the same building, same program, one version was a new build, one version was a renovate, expand. That makes sense?
Are there two stations?
No, I'll give you more context, I'm sorry.
One, one has twenty twenty-one on this list, one has twenty twenty-two, and I'm trying to do that.
So the project started in two thousand eighteen as a whole and the project was a fire station, something. City Hall, something, a library, something and a senior center, something, so this, all four of those are gonna be. Twelve point six month, all of those.
Okay.
The fire station came in at four million trending towards five, they said, whoa, let's not do a new building, let's not tear it down. Let's not do a new one on top of the old site, let's just renovate and add to the. Fire station that's there, so that's the version that's two point nine five is the renovation of the fire component. Yes, but that gives you, actually, I'm glad you pointed it out because that gives. No, that's Warren. Warren is the other, we're working on five different stations for Warren right now. And they're just tipping over the five hundred dollars a square foot and that's kind of a, let's say bulk pricing. Based on input we're getting from the construction industry. Anyway, I'm not using this to say. That's why the estimates that we have for Dexter is what they are, I'm just giving you some, here's what's going on in the last five years. That the price have gone up incrementally and then skyrocketed in the last year and a half.
So when you, when you put the estimate together, are you basically? How does Axiom get to? Twelve million, ten million or something, do they, do, are they? Or are they going to a list like you have and they're saying it's gonna be approximately just place square feet?
They don't do it component by component because there aren't. All the components necessary, they're doing a little bit empirical and a little bit from experience and then a little bit from conversation. So we're explaining to them what the intent, design intent would be in terms of level of quality. And they're looking at those for both stations, then it's taking the. The station that's wide open, map site, two and a half acres, easy to receive and lay down material, erect, et cetera. As compared to, hey, I'm gonna be in downtown setting with pedestrians, park and I got limited. Mobility to terms of receiving, so I'm gonna have to sequence the receiving materials strategically, so that's a. We get such reference in their schedule, so that they look at, you know, schedule standpoint. As well as the different kind of aspects of what is in the building.
So yeah, so you're you're describing the difficulty of construction.
Yes.
More so. Although you're starting with a building, are those, are those broken out somewhere? I mean, to get to ten?
I'll say pretty loosely, but yes, so it's probably twelve or so items that. Like all calling major roofing, superstructure, site development, all the major components. Their background, I mean, their backup information, I don't really have that, I could ask for it, but they'd probably say, well, I don't have. Or something, at this stage, they won't, they won't give as much.
I would just, I really just asked me if there's a. Another grand, another level of the number, you know?
I'd say there probably isn't in any formal way, but they're probably scratching on papers somehow.
I just might be interested, like you mentioned, you spent a lot of time describing the technology and audio visual, like we need to know how much. That is.
Oh, I do, those, those numbers we have broken out. He, you know, he's got a listing of, I was like I said, like a dozen different categories of components or trade costs. And I remember technology was like three hundred and twenty-five thousand or something in that range, technology and.
If there's any breakdown that we provide, I would be interested to see.
Okay, I could definitely provide what I have.
To clarify, the cost for temporary facility is not included in here, that was one of the soft costs you listed.
Correct.
And my understanding is that it's something between one and two million, is that something about right for the size we need?
I would say it's really high, but I'm not sure what you're talking about, the size you need, I was thinking. I would say it's gonna be far less than that, but I'm just shooting from the hip on that. I'd say it'd be way less than two, I would put it in. Five hundred thousand dollar range, like in that kind of category, and I'm just shooting from the hip here, right? I haven't really looked at that. Let's find, finding a spot that's suitable one, and then you're gonna have to do something to that spot, wherever that might be. So there's gonna be some capital costs and then there's gonna be rental costs.
I guess, and I I'm including the the site work in there, getting the details and.
There, there could be, depending on the location actually found. I I would imagine there might be some. Local other jurisdiction and you bring apparatus to. And then have a presence somewhere that serves this area from response time. That doesn't have all the equipment in it, but you'll use other facilities to put some apparatus at, I'm just thinking out loud, but. That would be a real discussion that would have to take place to make sure that you. Everyone's satisfied with the approach that's being taken through the temporary floors. There's a lot of ways to do, I've done it where they move out, there's a local building, they move in and, you know, I. What they do to the building, I guess, is kind of standard your head for twelve months because you're gonna be gone. The other thing I've done was, there's been apparatus. In the space, we just did the right area fire authority, two buildings there, one was renovate and occupy. Don't lose any functionality. So that was a phased effort. Where they did parts of the building and moved people around while they're doing construction and the headquarters outside. Living quarters outside, but the fire functions stayed in operation. And it seemed to go, okay, was it perfect? Probably not, but they made it through construction. And it's not a comment, I've been, I think, five different stations in the role you. Renovation to living side, norms and day room, kitchen kind of thing and. We put facilities outside.
We've heard we can't get trailers here, don't say.
That is, that's the first conversation is can we do that and. So there's two things, there's code and there's ordinance and I'm not sure what he refers to, why he can't. But essential services, fire being one of them, there's latitude and rights. But as a central service to do things that maybe others can't do. And we've never had a problem with that, it comes up, but essential services are treated moving.
A while back, I brought up Highland Township. And they recently, I think, instructed three new stations, and we guys were part of that.
Two.
Two, two new stations. And I brought it up because it seemed like there was a lot that was similar between there, including their service area, this was the equipment they had. Things like that, it seemed like there were things that were comparable, at least the first batch that they needed to it. I, they're on the list here, their station number one was the main station, we built new in twenty twenty, estimated total value. Five million, fourteen thousand seven hundred square feet. So I managed to pull up in one of the packets of their governing body, Highland Township. The floor plan, this is dated in November of twenty nineteen, so I don't know if it's the latest one. I mean, what strikes me is obviously there are a lot of similarities, it's fire station, it's the main fire station. They have four bays as opposed, four dark bays as opposed to five. I would personally want to do a comparison between. The two myself, just to see what are the functions, do we have the same functions and, you know, the map site versus what they have here, where the difference is, what this work for each difference is. But we can see here that, you know, the map site is twenty-two thousand four hundred square feet, if you subtract out. The sheriff substation, it gets closer to twenty thousand square feet. If we go from twenty thousand, we try to get down to, you know, fourteen seven, that's five thousand square feet. Say it's four hundred dollars a square foot, two, you know, two million dollar maybe. If we are able to, you know, shrink it down, five thousand square feet.
Yeah, I'd put it two and a half million savings.
Yeah, so. I don't know, I guess, I mean.
Depends on where you take the space out also.
Right, where I'm at with this is, I mean, in terms of location, I feel like. The downhill location to me feels a bit like square peg, round hole, we're trying to find a lot in a space that I think, yeah. Given what else could be done with that space, I'm not interested in spending a lot more money at that location. I'm partial to moving in. I'm not partial to spending. That amount of money, particularly not when it's only city structure residents paying that money, I know you are not involved in that decision. So I guess in where my train of thought is going next is. Can we find any external justification for reducing the size in any way of what has been proposed to us? And because I don't have substantive knowledge, I can't immediately, you know, I can't come up with that off the top of my head. So a reasonable place to begin is looking at other new, you know, similar comparable station. Highland strikes me as one, we were involved in that. Anyway, I guess I'm just sort of. Putting all my thoughts out there, but I don't know what happens if we reduce one bay, for example, if we reduce, I don't know if it was the fitness room and a different one. Like fitness room was two hundred square feet larger in ours than the theirs was. I don't know if you can add, but they had six dorms where ours chose four. I don't know if that's a worthwhile endeavor, I don't know. Other people think about that sort of approach.
Well, I don't know if there was a question in there, but I was making up an answer, right? So first of all, the building can be small. It's a matter of compromise, there's certainly areas I pointed out, the pre-function space to the training area. Could be, should be bigger. And it depends on what kind of training, what kind of reach you wanna have, is just. Interdepartmental or you wanna look at it as a regional space, do you wanna look at it like is happening right now, the trend in. Public essential services is that it's a more community space where it needs to be welcoming of more than just the users. That's a different conversation, but it with that, the pre-function space maybe becomes more important. The other aspect of what I kind of was thinking as you were talking was. High Highland is an example. I'm gonna talk loosely here, but I'm gonna try to remember generally right numbers. That was a, is a different delivery, which is generally more cost effective and more timely. Take out a pandemic and it usually works. And that delivery was a design bill for the guarantee where we say. We understand what you want, we're gonna design what you want, everybody looks at it, agrees it is, meets the need, and then we say it's this price. No more, if something happens, it happens on our fault, our problem. With pandemic, that's a little different, but that was the delivery mode and with that concept approach. They said, how much will it cost? And we said, I'll say nine and a half million, that was eighteen or nineteen. It's whoa, that's more than I want, and they said it's gotta be this, I think it was seven and a half. So we said, okay, we'll work towards seven and a half, we know what you want, nine and a half's too much, let's work down, reduce things. Make some material changes, look at things differently, design bill, which is in real time. The design engineers, architects working with the substrates, the end producers. Work with them during the course of design, so I'm not saying we're gonna build an X Y Z widget. And the subcontractors say, well, I don't do that, it's gonna cost you more, do it like this, so we have those conversations and design documentation. Which streamlines the process from a time standpoint and gets the most cost effective. Result from the person that's actually saying how much it's gonna cost. So in that result or in that process. The number they wanted, I'll say seven and a half, wasn't realistic, we just couldn't do and meet their criteria. We said we can do it, but here's what you lose, so I can't do with that, but we can add and make it eight and a half minutes, so we went from nine and a half to. Seven and a half, we met in the middle, but we made compromises. And that, that process was very collaborative, and it wasn't. We do it and then they're out of the picture, collaboration maintains all the way to the end. Uh, because there's savings opportunities during construction. If you maintain the mindset to, hey, we need to make this most cost effective as possible, because what it will happen. Always, but frequently, when the substrate will say, you know, I bid it this way because you wanted me to, but if I do it this way, I could save you money. And you might not know that until three months into construction. So if the team is a team from the beginning, the engineers, design team will say, okay, I'll look at that alternative. If it looks good, we'll say, okay, the owner's beneficiary is saving money. And that kind of goes through the whole process, so. We finished station one on budget and we were able to transfer some money from Highland Station one to Station two. That's kind of the pandemic timeframe. And I mentioned earlier subcontractors say, hey, I need more because my suppliers won't honor my number. So we wound up raising the GMP or the guarantee by three hundred and fifty thousand. Over eight and a half million is pretty small compared to what we were going through, but. It was again through diligence of the process of doing it in design build versus the traditional design it, bid it and build it. Cause then you kind of wind up with whatever the market is at the time. You have the advantage of. Massaging the market through the whole course of construction. That was just a way to do it. Doing, we're doing the same approach at Madison Heights with the guarantee for that.
So what are those key terms again? The, so there's design, bid, build.
Design, bid, build. That's the very traditional.
Right.
That's the way we did City Hall, design, bid, build. Uh, there's a couple other hybrids of construction management where you identify the whole team, where you. Bring the construction manager in, in this design phase where they work alongside. Designer to provide input, constructability reviews, give you a market test on where things are, help you make good decisions. Um, and then they want to be a, a, an employee to the city, right? And the architect industry works with them. Or the design build is where. They're united and they're a team because they're committed to this obligation of the guarantee. So the designer and builder, the engineer all become one unit. It eliminates, like I said, time and saves money. And avoids what is pretty common in construction. Well, it's not my fault, it's his fault. It's not my fault, it's their fault. You got arguments you gotta deal with that kind of takes that out of the equation. It, it works pretty good. We did that at City of Rose Point also, where we did their fire. Police and public works in the courtroom. And that was with the guarantee. It finished right after the pandemic and. Uh, we, we beat the guarantee and we're able to return a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars back to the city. Cause that was the arrangement, is that it's an open book process. Only spend what you need to spend, whatever the order is the owners. In that case, we have a share arrangement, which was an incentive to keep pressing, how can we save money? So. But it was a really win-win, isn't it?
You don't happen to know what, like the current happenstance spending is, do you?
No.
And some of these have actually been bid and some of these are just estimates.
Correct. Some bid and built, some estimate sitting on the sidelines waiting and. Some revamped, like the, for example, the town of Madison Heights. So we have a bunch more, all we can act like two thousand and two, I think, or pretty irrelevant at this point. Nobody wants to see a fire station, you need all this square foot.
Are most places building similar exterior, do we? Being built nice?
I would say the main stations, yes, and um. With, with the encouragement of being creative, save money and. And I, I would say a good design doesn't have to be expensive. One functionality is first foremost, but it could be appealing, could be character right, could be in context, whatever. Just doesn't have to be expensive. So we always try to, the one thing that we do. I don't think it's our own special trick, but. In addition to the building code is the energy code for Michigan, which requires certain high performing. Standards and fire stations, as we know it, can't really meet that performance criteria. Cause they had these gigantic doors that go up and down. When heat comes, schools comes in. So we designed that portion, which is typically a very expensive part of the fire station. With a wall construction type that's most economical. Uh, it's bearing wall structure, so it could, you know, have a superstructure inside of it. And you don't have a veneer material and different kinds of materials within the cavity. And it's worked pretty well. It's not my. It's not as a. Forget about it. As the other, the other method with a backup system, cavity insulation, drainage material, outside veneer. You build anything, forget about, nothing will ever go wrong with that. But the other approach, you have to be very careful in design and engineering, because you have one wall. Not a veneer, one wall that supports the structure. The one wall has the insulation in it. The one wall has to have the reinforcing in it. So you have to design that one single wall very carefully. To make sure it does all the things it needs to do, because you don't have the backup of a structural system or veneer to protect it from the weather. But we've done it pretty successfully for a lot of years. So the other thing I wanted to answer, I was gonna say one other point. And I was gonna use Highland as an example. We, we were at a number and they said, no, it's gotta be this. And we redesigned to say, we can do it, but it's gonna be more. We're right now in the process of doing the new headquarters for Reno Township. It's a five bay station also. And we went through a construction design process and estimated the project. And they were basing how much they were willing to spend on. Maybe a lot of municipalities do this on, based on what is the number they're gonna have to ask the public for. So we estimated the project and they said, well, here is the number. It's, it's, it's not considering your number, but here's the number we're willing to ask for. And can you build the station that you've told us about for that money or less? And the answer in that equation was a little bit back and forth, but the end result was yes, that's what you're willing to ask for. We were comfortable with meeting the criteria and making some little changes to material choices. And, and some of it was, you know, significant in that project, because MDOT was involved and the turnabout was, there was a lot of. Outside influence on the number. But the, the, the end result was they said, here's the number, can you do it? And. That seems to be more common nowadays than what we're used to, where we say, here's how much it costs. And you decide to do it or not. Now we're working kind of in a backwards fashion in some.
And that, that's that eight point seven million here, it's a second one almost?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the uh construction cost for now. And they're.
That's actual, that's a bid one?
That's a, a detailed estimate, a, a real, like thirteen pages, super detailed estimate.
That's a real, a real detail.
Very detailed. It adds, that was very detailed. Into the whole story, but a number needed to have all the lots of goals too.
And that's, that's comparable size station to what we're talking about.
It's right on. And so, I don't remember the square footage.
Eighteen, eighteen, three.
Yeah, and you're maintaining, I think, plus shares.
The difference, cause that township's population is almost twenty thousand.
I think it's twenty-six thousand.
It's up to twenty-six thousand.
I think it's twenty-six.
It was eighteen thousand in two thousand and eighteen. That's twenty-six thousand, that's five times more people.
Yeah.
We're talking about the DAFD service area, which is that more than eighteen thousand?
Well, I'm talking about. I don't know how many, how many, how many fire stations does we have, township?
I think three.
This is the main?
Yeah, this will be a replacement of their main, their, where their existing one is now. We're building the public safety campus, so there's a new police station there.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three. And then the existing fire station is situated awkwardly where MDOT is. Reshaping the crown of the road, because it's dangerous where you come up over the hill and you crash. And to re-crown the road, you kind of have to move the fire station, because it's right on that, right at the ground. But that fire station will be replaced and put back at the place. So there's, there's some site development costs and that's what that was leading to. Some of the site development for that project is available for the fire station. So it helps their cost.
Definitely, that's fine. So I'm just trying to the fact that we have the village impact analysis for ten million dollars, it's a zero percent actual value, just for example. But it's uh saying, you know, approximately three mills, which I think is where you guys were at a couple of years ago. But my understanding from this conversation, ten million would not be enough, is that right?
Let's break shovel today and don't be soft cost.
Okay, well.
Soft cost.
Okay, so if we were simply, if we're going with this final number and we're covering it all, it would be something more than that. If, if we go the approach of how much are we willing to ask from the public? One thought that came to my mind was, we do a volunteer, three mills, but. Oh, quite the question before that. Does the DAFD pay to lease the substation? They do? Do you know, off the top of your head, how much?
Um, there's a drastic difference between what DAFD is paid on Dexter Township and what they're paid in Webster Township. Uh, Dexter Township is. Three hundred a month, that includes maintenance, uh insurance, and a couple other minor things. The uh Webster Township station is almost fourteen hundred dollars a month. But the maintenance costs are much higher there because they're on a septic system. Uh, two septic systems, which we will, and they've got a larger area for stone plowing and grass mowing. So theirs, what they negotiated with DAFD is a much higher number, but I think those are probably gonna be a three year rest period of interest.
I mean, I brought up this issue last time, but I don't think it should be the burden of city of Dexter right now, it's to pay entirely for the main station. And I don't know what the workaround is for that. One thought is, we, we run some, the mills, the three mills and somehow work to get down to that. And then we get refunded, we are leased, one mill between the two townships. They each somehow pay a half, half mill, so that the net cost to our residents, you know. Just an idea for it out there. I don't know how that would actually be operationalized or actually go for that, um.
And you're just making it on numbers?
Pretty, kind of, you know, mostly based on what I've seen, like, okay, three mills is what we were talking about a couple of years ago. Can we get this design down to what we're paying, three mills, and then can we get reimbursed one mill? And then somehow each, so we, I mean, I don't think we could just ask for two mills and then somehow use that money to pay, I mean. If we make a front of cost, or is there a way we can be reimbursed, have the other two townships split the equivalent of one mill? And then somehow get that back to the residents each, obviously. I don't know.
Well, it's true to involve a lot more conversations.
Right.
Lewis, when you come, Jamie said.
Where you started, where you started was.
The, the number, the number that Zach was, was getting, I think, was.
Fourteen million. Well, fourteen, fourteen million.
In construction cost.
Plus soft.
Plus soft cost, which you said was about fifteen percent.
Takes us to sixteen million dollars. The hard cost, if you're wondering, is the eighty percent increase from what it was in twenty twenty.
I think, so he said one mill, and so on a two hundred thousand dollar house, he said it's a hundred dollars a season.
Yeah, yeah, if, if, if you're, you know, working down to use.
So if it was three mill, it would be. Three hundred dollars a year. But say it's one of the four hundred, that's six hundred dollars either. So that's fifty dollars a month.
Yeah, if you got to six hundred. That, that part of the job, yeah.
Right, well, like say, it's four hundred thousand dollars. I don't, I don't know many people were for the two hundred thousand dollar.
Yeah, so, so you're saying two hundred dollars.
Yeah. Which is then fifty dollars one. So three mills, fifty dollars one. I don't really like that many, yeah.
It's not necessarily for those in a four hundred thousand dollar house, but what about people like me who aren't in a four hundred thousand dollar house? Who are single income.
Right.
I mean, that's a lot for me.
Well, we left for you that too.
Yeah, but still, I mean, relatively speaking, you know, we are always talking about. How's the cost going up and like driving out people who live forever. It's, it's a delicate conversation. And, you know, on top of that, like senior citizens who've been here forever on fixed name homes. Whose properties, I mean, the other taxes are. You know, from a long time ago, presumably, but it's still, I don't know, it's, it's, it's easy to say fifty dollars is what I want, but. I mean, in actual practice, I don't know if that's necessarily true. I'd be curious, so like our sewer and water rates go up. You know, I'd be curious to, I, I don't, I think there, there were small numbers. At first I'm like, oh, three percent, seven percent, that sounds like a lot. But then when whoever asked what was the easiest way to learn tax accounting, so I'd be interested to see what are other fifty dollar cost that we ask for. How it's really to. Crash or, you know, to put it in the hundreds.
Yeah, so, so I knew, you know, trash is only twenty-five dollars, almost twenty-six, fifty. So, you know, two months worth of trash for fifty dollars.
But if we got like one mill reimbursed, so that brings it down to four. Thirty-three? So if we get reimbursed from the other township, never?
Well, that's the thing to me, like, I'm, you know, I look at it the same way, but I don't know how I could manage any of that, but it's harder than some of these numbers. Population for these people who are paying for this, and we look at our population and say, oh, this is fine, let's just do this. Like, I. It, it makes me nauseous, see?
Well, so Mike, and so I have Highland Township, my estimate was there at twenty thousand total. And DAFD is at eighteen thousand total, but right, Highland Township, it's spread across all those, yes, a lot of people. And, I mean, so I think there was just a mistake in how this was originally set up, so do we have an opportunity to rectify that? And. They don't, I don't think five thousand, people should be very worried about that.
That's, that's some math for the suburb my neighbor, two houses down, your taxable value is ninety-three thousand.
Okay, let's not put my personal stuff in this meeting right now.
Well, so it, it comes out though to twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents.
That's fine, but. You know. That, that's, the point is what I just said, which was. Population discrepancy and this amount of money is just really harsh. These other things that we're looking at on this list. I mean, there's nothing comparable.
It built before we had multiple years of twenty percent escalation cost.
And they still wouldn't have been comparable then. I'm not saying we shouldn't do something. I'm just saying, this is a, this is a kind of a depressing conversation. Well, so if we look at the renovation cost for downtown versus the new, they're kind of. Right.
Yeah, this is the first meeting where that's been.
In that way, right.
It's never, never before has it ever been presented with anyone close to their capital.
But this is now, with the more atmosphere, where everything's fully built out to have the same thing.
I can answer this, Chris. So if I can object at that point, so if, if we. If I take a different view, oh, you compare MAP more to Main Street. They would both come down. So as an example, I, I mentioned the wall tech construction. Cabin wall, and then look at the, the doors, they're all glass. If we went to a, like Madison Heights door, it's a partial glass, more insulated, more metal, less. There are a number of material choices that I used from MAP site onto Main Street that brought that price up. If we reverse some of the approach and said, hey, we're gonna take a frugal, really frugal approach. Using some of the Main Street concepts and applying it to MAP, that number would come down and then it would. Main Street would gravitate back to, not to wear claws, but that direction. It's still gonna be more. It's still gonna be more. There are, there are things that you can do to the design without compromising functionality to reduce the cost. There are things you can also do to functionality to further drive the cost down. Like I can live without a pre-function spacing to my training room. I deal now, but you can, most stations deal with it without having one. So there are a number of things that you can do.
Well, I think that's what you were saying earlier too, and that's definitely something that I've been thinking about this whole time, we've been having this discussion, is you know, what does that look like? I'm not trying to sit here for months and months and years and years and years, but like I just, it's hard to make a huge decision like this without that information, I think, without that comparison and the compromise and just see, I mean, I'm not saying we have, you know, we necessarily have to take every single compromise. But to look at what the options are, I think is important.
That's why I was asking about, is there a more grander look at how you get to a number because you could challenge certain sections if you know what you're challenging, but I don't know how, I don't know, I, I know the numbers, but I don't know how you got to the total.
I can see how that might help with some understanding for sure. I would almost look at it as your buyer and you, you, maybe you know what you want to spend, no matter what it is, a pair of blue jeans, and you're gonna go to the store that sells that kind of price point for your blue jeans. Pick that price, whatever that is, and say, put this building with my absolute functionality, gotta have stuff into that price. And then what will happen is the material choices will be your fluctuation. It'll be this material versus that material. Preserving that functionality that you said you gotta have and meet that number, whatever that number is. Almost is like chasing your tail when you're design what I want and tell me what it costs. And then, well, that's too much. Well, what do you change? Maybe by looking at breakdowns. You, you won't change one lighting handle as an example. Or maybe you will, the roof. So the roofing at I'm gonna forget which one. So there's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar roofing savings to go from silhouette slow roof to flat roof. I didn't take any rain protection away from your building, but save money. It's just a different look. So there's a number of things like that in the glass door, partial glass door that you would use to meet the number, whatever the number is. I kind of suggest after going through with other municipalities, this kind of cycle of how do we get what we want with the kind of money that we're gonna be able to spend is it's almost say, well, tell me how much I have to design to, tell me the number that I have to meet. And I won't show you something you can't afford versus here's an idea that I think works for your city and then it costs too much. Because we can do that quite for a long time.
Sometimes it helps to start there to even know.
Exactly. Now, now you kind of, you kind of know that there's a, there's a product that's maybe more than you think that the community can support or is willing to support, but can we get something for less? And I think really, when I go back in mind, that's kind of how we did that September version of Main Street is that whatever we were at, six million, how can you do it? Can you do it for two? Or three, whatever, I can't remember the number, but we became kind of close, but we made compromises and it was pretty obvious to everybody that looked at it, there was some compromises.
Go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I mean, do people around the table feel like you have a preference in the wage? So for me, the biggest concern is cost. I think it seemed like previously cost was closely tied to the station, which may or may not be. My preference is the map site because I think there's greater value to these than it's like, yeah. I think the money could be better spent in any different locations. I'm just curious, do you even have a great reference? If we could constrain costs in the way that we're comfortable with, do people have a preference in location? I don't know, man. Do you have a first?
Yeah, I, I don't want to spend this much money on something that's entirely compromised from the day one and has no room for flexibility in the future.
Particularly, I guess, department decisions, parks departments come up with, and they like to see what they're doing. I go to the concept, I think you might see the open on Main Street, like those from Alpine to where you go to under the park, there's gonna cover up a big portion of that area there. And there's two as well as park. And I just don't see, see that as a viable site for what we need to do or have here in the city of that spot. Or we can make that a much better spot for other activities and still have a, have all.
Well, I do have to be clear then. I just don't think, I mean, I would need to see like a compromise on what we have proposed from the map site before I can make that decision.
Say I don't want to hear more of them.
Could you bring, yeah. Okay, I disagree.
Well, can, can we get, can we get some more? Breakdown or some options?
Of course, absolutely. You say option or just the break? Either one I could do.
Material differences or where we could save money or you know, go the other way from where you went.
Okay, so I understand that same, I would take versions of function and apply different materials or identify areas that can shrink. Is that right? Yeah, so I'll provide the background.
I think to do that, even I need to, I mean, the ideas of what areas can shrink is important. You know, what you're, what you're shrinking, the relative cost saving is too bad. If, if it's just a matter of four hundred miles square foot, not every area is the same, right?
Right.
So you're gonna have to, you, you can't average it. You gotta kind of give us some detail on it.
So I'll.
No, it's just vestibule space where there's nothing there versus we're having a smaller bay area or something.
What they only have right there. So it might look at the plan as three areas, right? There's a living admin area and apparatus and there's support. I don't think you can shrink the support too much, but you can. I don't think you can shrink admin living too much, but I think you can shrink the app base. Not in base, but in definite way. And that could be a pretty good chunk. So have ten rest. So you're gonna, basically I'll take out the flexibility that's in the plan.
What, what do you think you need in terms of time? To do so, that's.
What kind of product do you want back? You just want a memo that says here that I think we can do and cost, or do you want graphical depictions of it?
Well, I'd like something more than just one number, I guess.
Okay, so.
I'd like some detail on the numbers.
Wow, so breakdown.
Yeah. I don't necessarily need an illustration, I mean, any fancy illustration, you just want to hand write on top of this.
Right.
I could just do a sharp remark and say, here's what, here's what it is.
This goes just by design.
Right. And I don't, I don't know if this is too much to ask or if it even makes any sense, but we're talking about you know, the disproportionate cost that we're putting on our citizens as, you know, across the other people in the F A, DAFD. Is there anything in the map site plan that we could scale back with the idea that it would be phased in later and possibly at one of the other stations as opposed to here? It just, I mean.
From a functional standpoint, the way your whole fire station, that's a very challenging ask. The thing I would say to the sheriff's component, that would be an easy thing to say, take it off. From a standpoint, I mean, it's easy, they're making my job easier because it doesn't work for you. But I think the depth of the bay considering your ten plan or foreseeable apparatus at the shrink.
Is it possible for you to have something backed by an actually?
Yes. In that format.
Moving on the same time as the work process for the task at touch.
Can I just do that on the map site in terms of coming up there? Because they're so different. It's easy for me to do on the map site. If I do it on both sides at the time, it's a level for sure. And if I'm thinking, I can do it in a week, I could have something back to you crude enough to understand.
Is it gonna be applicable from one or the other?
Some things will, but the biggest thing, the biggest improvement I could make is probably gonna be it from that side.
But then there are things at eight one forty that I don't see in there yet. Like I don't see this SCBA room. I don't see housekeeping room from the slot market.
Yeah, there's a lot of unidentified space. I mean, again, this is a concept to give me a a little bit more than a test for pit, but I wouldn't go through the detail of doing that now either. I would wait till we get to this.
We ask you to do what you can do in two weeks.
I, I would done in two weeks if that's when you need it. Just do what I need to do. So two weeks from Friday, this past Friday. So you'll have it again Friday before your Monday meeting. If that's suitable, I'd like to ask for that much time.
That would be fine. Thank you.
Yeah, for the, uh, the eighth.
Yeah, not perfect. Better, better than less.
Sure. What, what was the process for negotiating the lease arrangements for Dexter, Webster Township? Uh, 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 the, and, and David, this isn't, this isn't, this is maybe for the, the chief. How, how, how did those processes go?
So basically when Webster or the Dexter Township building was put in place, it was Harley was the chairperson out there. And he championed the effort of doing a draft agreement and then it came to the fire board. Ultimately, the fire board is one that agrees to that, to that lease. The same thing occurred with Webster Township as the fire, fire board members, Dan Monzel and and County Sheriff for in that committee, they put together a lease agreement and presented it to the DAFD board. Ultimately, it went through several revisions and then got approved. Really, that agreement is, is approved between the fire board and the individual municipalities and then I simply have to put it into our, our spending plan or our budget. Uh, but I think it's important to remember, no matter what that number comes up to, it goes into DAFD's budget. And it's still split three ways, right? So no matter what the numbers is, Dexter Township lease comes out three ways, it gets, you know, costed back to whatever each municipality's paid in and, and Webster's the same way. And obviously the city is gonna be the same way. So when you talk about recovering one mill, if you just put one in, you're only gonna cut, you know, sixty six percent because a third of that comes to the city. So you gotta kind of look at that and it'll be up to the city. Your, your current lease is kind of antiquated, but it works in the city's favor. Uh, and I would expect that it would be significantly different. Hope that answers.
Okay, so we have ring seven block. Justin, do you have enough direction? David, Justin, do you have a direction to? I read back one more. Thank you for coming up.
Oh, it's always a pleasure to you.
Let's take a couple, three minutes to use our students and then we'll start right in.